Recording in progress.
Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Okay, good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Thursday, September 18th, 2025. The first matter on the agenda is the minutes for approval for September 4th. I've been informed that our planning staff is still working on those minutes. So I'll make a motion that we continue them to our next meeting, which is October...
20th.
No, do we have one before that? October?
Oh, 6th, I'm sorry.
Yeah, October 6th. Okay, so I'll make a motion we continue the minutes to October 6th.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is made, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, hearing none, the minutes are continued. Moving along on the agenda, we have a definitive subdivision, 129 Llewellyn and 115 Christian Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Kristen Hill Homes LLC to subdivide the above listed property into 17 lots and construct a new single family on each lot. The subject property is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district. The project requires definitive subdivision approval from the planning board under Lowell subdivision of land regulations. May we hear from the applicant, please? Okay, so we have a request for continuance. What's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the matter of definitive subdivision for 129 Llewellyn and 115 Christian Street to the October 20th Planning Board meeting.
Second?
Motion is made, and second, Lucia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote chair. Any opposition, hearing none. That motion is allowed, so anybody who's here this evening, or watch it on TV, this matter will be on until the October 20th meeting. Thank you, counsel. You're welcome, sir. Okay, moving along on the agenda. The next matter is a site plan review amendment and special permit for 1 Merrimack Plaza. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Merrimack LLC to allow a multifamily use with greater than 11 units, where it is currently authorized to operate as a dormitory, and to amend their approval to remove the restriction on the building's use for multifamily housing. The applicant proposes no change to the property. The subject property is located in the downtown mixed-use zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval per Article 12.1 for multifamily use with greater than 11 residential units and a site plan review amendment per Section 11.4. May we hear from the applicants, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Tiam, the co-founder and associate advisor on the Atlas Maple Capital. With me this evening is Chris Wyatt, the co-founder of the owner-operator Maple Capital. I'll be very brief regarding this was property that Maple required back in 2016. Chris will outline a couple of the reasons why this is important for the successful operation of the property, as well as how it advances the number of city rules. This has been reviewed by all of the city departments. We responded this afternoon in clarifying with the building commissioner that there are no changes proposed to the property. The reason we are for you is because it was originally determined by the special department of the city. In order to allow flexibility to operate, needs nonstudents required a notice. And that is why we require this to be noted on the article. In addition, the amendment to the site plan, you would think is because it's not visible, but that's not the case. The 2016 site plan, which was a decision that changed the condition that practically says the units shall not be rented at all. And that, I could tell you, is questionable in terms of legality of the site plan. But in any events, if we're here before him for a special permit, why not also clarify the designation of the law? So I'll turn it over briefly to Chris. We have the location shown on the overall plan of the city in the downtown. And I think this might be helpful, as Chris outlines, how this is consistent with the city's map, map of plan and plan to go downtown in 2016.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Chris Wyatt, I'm the principal with McCourt Capital LLC, and I just want to say first off, thank you to the board for putting us on the agenda and hearing our petition. As Peter mentioned, we own and professionally manage Edge Merrimack River Apartments. We acquired it two years ago out of a foreclosure sale here in Lowell. So we weren't the original developer of it. We weren't the original owner or builder of it. We came on the scene much later. If you're not already familiar with the building, and perhaps we could put it on the screen in front of you or above you, it's a five-story residential apartment building located directly across the street from the high school at the intersection of French Street and Father Moore Set. And it consists of 147 individual apartments. These are one-bedroom, two-bedroom, even four-bedroom apartments, each with one or more bathrooms and each with their own kitchens. So although it's zoned as a private dormitory, it really doesn't resemble a dormitory. It looks like an apartment building, is an apartment building. And those apartments today would appeal to and could be rented to young professionals, young families, whether without children, even elder households. But for the fact that none of those types of renters are students typically. So that brings me to why we think this is a good idea. This request for zoning relief is a good idea, not just for the building, but for the city of Lowell. We think it aligns very well with your goals as we understand them in the Lowell Forward, in the Lowell Housing Production Plan, and other statements and documents that we sort of follow. And I'll just take a minute to go through three of those. Because students are seasonal residents, the current zoning, which restricts the building to students, effectively induces a vacuum out of that building and out of the downtown during the summer when those students depart. So as Lowell wants to create a vibrant downtown with a lot of foot traffic, a signature downtown, by changing the type of occupant who can be in that building to year-round residence, we can attract a type of tenant who will be invested in the neighborhood and will be more inclined to come to the downtown year-round. And two, Lowell needs more housing units, right? They want to create, I think, something like 3,000 more units just by 2030. And of course, you can do that through ground-up construction, which is costly and takes a lot of time. And certainly, I think there were a couple of groundbreakings even this week that were great. Or you could do it effectively through zoning change. And that's what we're recommending. By changing the type of occupant who can live in these units, you increase the supply of general housing units really immediately without any kind of cost. And you do that in areas of the city that's already dense, that's already well-connected by public transit. We have a trolley, or you have a trolley, that runs directly from the front of our building right into the downtown, the historic trolley. We're very walkable to downtown. I did it tonight, it's about two minutes. And we do it by better utilizing a private resource, which is our building. And then the third point I'd make is that Lowell is expecting a lot of jobs in the next few years, in the next decades, hopefully for many, many years to come. And you've got to have people to take the jobs. And so population growth has to keep up with job growth. And to the extent that we can create housing in Lowell that retains people, not just students, but people who will fill those jobs, and we're going to retain the talent in Lowell, and that's, I think, good for everyone. So that's the points I wanted to make, and we're here to answer any and all questions, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak for the applicant?
No, just simply, as I had mentioned in my introduction, this has had the review by the relevant departments. Really, from our perspective, nothing substantive, and we provided two points of clarification. And Chris and his team did reach the building commissioner, who confirmed that this was in fact appropriate. From his point of view, there were no code compliance issues by allowing for greater flexibility in the leasing of the building. So just again, for the public and for the board, the request is essentially seeking that the board authorize a new special permit to allow for this building to be leased to non-students. And so the special permit is for multifamily use. That would not abandon or change the fact that there are many students that lease these units. So essentially, both of these uses can coexist, student dormitory and multifamily. The second item that we're requesting is an amendment of the site plan to strike that condition.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members, if we have any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Fisher.
Both of us were here for that first go-around on the...
We sure were. Remembered very clearly.
And if some people had their way, there would be even other conditions that would be questionable on this site plan.
I'm not questioning.
So it was a challenge at best.
Evening, yep.
But certainly, I think this fits into all the documents that were cited. Not mentioning it is going to be strategically located to the LINK program or the LINK plan with University of Lowell, UMass Lowell. And quite frankly, when we looked at it from a dormitory perspective, as well as the John Street parking garage, it's not that far away from here relative to downtown urban living. So from that perspective, I think that has a lot going for it. So from that perspective, I'm fine with it. Is it just going to be whatever the market dictates? Are you looking to, at some point, just transition everything to just, you know, market rate rental, whether there's students there or not? I mean, are you banning any kind of effort to really market it to students?
Well, I won't speak for Chris, and I'll let him respond. But I think the reason for seeking the flexibility is simply because there are available units today, yet there's demand. And so the restriction is really inhibiting the market.
Sure.
And so I think we're going to let the market dictate. And it's also dependent on what the university ultimately does, in terms of responding to student needs on campus.
Yeah. I mean, the prior administration, they were not in favor of dormitory housing that was not managed and owned by the university. They were very public about that. And so that, you know, when the city created the ordinance, it seemed like this is great. This is a way to, you know, be able to tax it and still provide some... And it really became a conflict, to be honest with you. So I don't think it's worked the way the intent was of the zoning at this point. So certainly understand that. And it's almost, I think, a dormitory project that comes into the city is almost set up to fail at this point because of that conflict. So certainly recognize the dynamics going on relative to that type of housing that's not managed and run by the university. And they have their reasons. If bad things happen, regardless, even though it's not owned and managed by the university, it gets tied to the university, and, you know, they have their reasons. And I can't speak for the current administration, but I think that was kind of the history of how things got a little bit murky relative to these types of projects coming before us. You know, as far as the DMU zone and the way it sits right now, there's no parking requirements. So from that perspective, we're not looking at any issues. Relative to the building inspector's comments, and then you mentioned, I found it interesting what he wrote. He said, "There are some suites in the property where they would work. If these units are not destined for that use, the applicant will be hard-pressed to create code-compliant apartments without pulling permits to renovate slash create what is existing single dorm space." So you said that... Did you enlighten him? How did things change? What happened?
Yes. We had our regional director of maintenance speak to him this morning.
Okay.
And he had not been... I think he'd been in the building once, and he had been in an apartment that actually had a bathroom and a kitchen. But he was under the impression that there could be other unit types that are just sort of single-room only, or just a room and no bathroom, no kitchen. So he thought, if you had more of those, you'd be hard-pressed to, you know, do something with them. Fortunately for us, every single apartment there, all 147, has a bedroom or more, one or more bathrooms and a kitchen. It looks just like an apartment. It doesn't really look like a dorm.
And of course, that was a concern at the time when we approved it, because you're calling it dormitories, but you're building it so that it could be non-dormitory use. And of course, the intent was to have it be dormitory use. So, but thank you for that clarification. So from that perspective, I think I'm fine with that. Looking at the building, I mean, architecturally, I think it fit in over there. I do have a comment, and we can tie it to the special permit. It's more of a site plan review issue, but the trash, the dumpsters. And I actually, on the way over here this evening, just drove right by it and just pulled in again, just to take another look. And just for yourself, too, especially if you're, you know, it's that, when you pull right in, it's a one-way, you pull in under the cover, and you come out. But you can see those dumpsters straight in. There's no, you know, there's no screening whatsoever from driving right in. I just think from an aesthetic perspective, and just if you're trying to attract people, too, as well, I would rather see that. And I know it's a pain, because they don't like to put gates on that, because the trucks come in. But in other communities, they require it. I think it's appropriate.
We can certainly find a way to screen those dumpsters.
Okay.
And I agree with you that, through the chairman, that addressing that in the amendment of the site plan makes a lot...
Yeah, it's a site plan issue, but yeah, exactly. So, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I'll go next, because I was at that meeting as well, and it was a late night. And I was the one who recommended the condition on the site plan and the special permit, because that was recommended to us by planning staff. I have no problems with amending it the fact, though, it would be to remove the condition prohibiting the use of the building from becoming market-rate housing. The building's already up, it's there. Like you said, there's no construction being done, the footprint's already there. So for the site plan, it makes it a lot easier. And I think a lot of the comments come in saying that, basically, like, it's already there, it's just basically a condition to be moved, so we can put more people and housing in downtown. And I'm all in favor, I don't have more objections to that. Thank you. Caleb, any questions, comments?
No questions. I think all the issues have been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucia, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just, out of curiosity, because you're looking to convert from dormitories to, you know, full housing, on the application for average unit size, square footage, you responded a mix of two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom. So I just would like to get an idea of the floor area ratio for, you know, the size of these apartments, because if you were coming before us with a site plan, we'd have to, you know, compare it to the required floor area ratio.
They're on the documents that were shown earlier. We have the floor plans, I think we have the square footage.
So I did see it, but like, square footage, in terms of square footage, do you have anything like...
We do have representative images of each of the unit types. So we're just going to pull those up. And we also have copies, and we had shared with the board copies of the original approved site plan set from 2016. Obviously, nothing has changed, so we should be able to answer your question. And specifically, you're looking to understand average size per unit?
Exactly.
I have, this is from our website, actually. The one-bedroom is a little under 500 square feet. There's another, there's a two-bedroom that's 950 to 1115 square feet. There's another two-bedroom, one bathroom, that is 740 or 50 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, thank you, that's helpful. And other than that, I'm all for, you know, converting. It's a no-brainer. And I have nothing else.
Thank you. Mr. Sa, any questions, comment?
No. I'm in favor of the flexibility of the zoning.
Thank you. So we need two votes, one to amend the site plan and the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to amend the site plan by removing the following language, "Approval of Site Plan Review: Application of Planning Board Will Prohibit the Conversion of the Use of the Building from that of a Student Housing to Market Rate or Affordable Residential Housing," and to place the condition that the applicant will screen the dumpsters located on the site from the roadway entering the facility.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, hearing none. That motion carries five in favor and none against. In regards to the special permit, I'll make a motion to approve with the two conditions that were outlined in the site plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Lucia, seconded, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, hearing none. That special permit is approved as well. Five in favor, none against. Wish you well, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. We have site plan review of 70 Wilbur Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to all interested persons relative to an application by Boston Runners LLC to operate a cannabis delivery business at the above address. The property is located in the light industrial zoning district. The proposed use requires site plan approval from the planning board under Section 7.10.5 from the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Catherine Welk.
My name is Catherine Welk. I'm with Foster Walker and DeMarco, 350 Main Street, Malden, Massachusetts. So, I'm here tonight representing Boston Bud Runners LLC, who's seeking to open and operate a marijuana delivery business out of 70 Wilbur Street, Unit 1B. So, as, as you had just repeated, I'm going to point out, this is in the LI zoning district, so we're only here for site plan review. It's already an allowed-use marijuana delivery operation, is an allowed use by right without a special permit in this zoning district. So, this building, or this unit, is in a pre-existing building, so it already is as it is. The unit is seven, or 966 square feet. It spans three stories. The first floor is mainly the area of interest. So, this first floor has 286 square feet, and that contains a receiving area and then a climate-controlled cannabis storage vault. So, this receiving area is where a marijuana delivery driver would drive on in. It's nice and secure. Everything is very, there's a high-security protocol in place, but no product is exchanged outside. Everything is done within this receiving area. The operator would be able to get product from the vault, put it into the car, then the car would leave. The car is not marked. The location will not have signage. Nothing will be marked, so it's very discreet, we can say. So, then, the next area, floor two, is just access to floor three, where floor three is just office space and a bathroom for this business to run. There's no, or no real impact or expansion on utilities or anything, just electric and normal water usage, to run a bathroom, to run an office space. Nothing is really changing from the current use as just a unit for business or commercial purposes. And it's very important to note, this space is not open to the public at all. Public does not get access. Only people who are associated with the business, who have to be 21-plus, already-approved, licensed credentials on them, can actually ever be in this space. There's going to be approximately, when starting out, three employees in the building at a time, two possibly upstairs running the business area, one downstairs in the loading area and near the, near the vault. The plan right now, as my clients start out, is to have two delivery drivers, and these two delivery drivers can do multiple deliveries with one load-up, so they're not constantly coming back and forth, in and out, down the street. So, if all, all orders are done online through a website or an app, and anything that's pre-done, they're prepaid for, it's cashless, so there will be no cash exchanged. Everything would be done and loaded up, so that these drivers can go off, just like a pizza delivery person. Deliver to person one, deliver to person two, deliver to person three, and then they would only be returning to the facility for, when they're out of what they need to deliver. So, the parking situation, under our current lease, which is a five-year lease with an option to renew for an additional five years, under that lease, we have the right to four parking spaces. As I mentioned, there are going to be three employees staffed within the building, so they all get a parking space. Then, one delivery driver is going to be in the loading area, so that, that car is already taken care of. They're inside the facility. Then that leaves a final car for the fourth parking space. We're also in an area where there's plenty of parking. The volume of what we anticipate for deliveries will vary during the day. Maybe weekends or evenings may have a greater volume. They're not continuing to operate beyond 9:00 PM, so it's no late-night delivery or anything like that. But everything is also going to be in line with the Cannabis Control Commission regulations, so there's a very strict protocol and rules as to what can and cannot be done, and my clients are going to be adhering to, adhering by the book to all of that. As I mentioned, there are very strong security measures that are going to be in place. There's total video coverage of the whole area. There are going to be intrusion alarms. There's panic alarms. There's going to be a direct call to the Lowell Police Department. So, if a button is hit, the Lowell Police Department will be immediately notified and onsite. As I said, limited access. No public is coming in. Everyone who is supposed to be there is actually supposed to be there. When it comes to receiving product, that gets delivered, for cannabis purposes, there's a seed-to-sale process, so there, all products are delivered sealed with their white label on them, so nothing is opened up, nothing is exchanged. It really is just a discreet delivery, put into the vault, loaded up. When certain deliveries are made, out they go. So, there's no odor, no smell, no, no trash, nothing. It's very, it's just a, this is a hub for deliveries coming in and out. I'd also like to point out that this is a quiet, dead-end street, so there's no more impact than current business use in this area. So, it's, again, not going to be continuous drivers coming up and down the road. Nothing is going to substantially change from the current traffic plan. And since no outdoor renovations are needed, and really, it's a pre-existing building, it's really ready to go, more or less, as it is, outside, outside of some just basic internal renovations, to get the vault set up. So, my client's ready to go. Once we go through this process, they are then excited to hopefully enter into a agreement with, a host community agreement with the city of Lowell. They're looking forward to a partnership and want to grow their business within the city and make everything work out for them, work out for the city. And that's pretty much it, so if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them on this project.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else want to speak for the applicant before I turn it over to the public? Okay.
These are the applicants right over here.
Okay.
Introduce.
Maybe we'll get some questions in. Anybody want to speak? Okay, so, at this point in time, I'll open up to the public. Anybody like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this point in time, I'll open up to the board members.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure. Lucia, over to you.
I, I wondered, you mentioned a host community agreement. Do you have an existing agreement in Salem, Mass?
We actually, my client had a provisional license in Salem, Mass, so yes, we had gotten through that, that procedure with Salem. The current, the landlord for that location had redevelopment plans for the building, so we weren't ever able to actually operate there. We got all the way to the finish line, and then we were not able to continue. But then, luckily, we, we found Lowell.
So, this would be your intended first?
Yes, yes. There is no other location on the table at the moment.
Okay. And then, as part of the application process, it looks like you're required to submit a map of, bear with me, a contact map depicting properties and land uses within 1,000 radius of the property site. I didn't see anything like that submitted.
I was going to say, I apologize, that wasn't brought to my attention when I completed the application, so maybe an oversight on our part. I know we submitted a site plan and.
I did see that.
But, no, we didn't, we didn't submit that.
Because there are restrictions on, you know, this type of business within 1,000 radius, 1,000 foot radius of certain other things, such as schools, preschools, another cannabis shop.
Sure. I was going to say, I can, I can submit that after this hearing, if you want to make that a condition.
Well, I'm not inclined to agree to this without knowing for sure that it's not in line with.
Sure. I can say on the butters list, I know that's not 1,000 feet, but based on the butters list, none of those.
And I did start looking, and I know that there's a cannabis shop, I think 1,500 feet away, but I don't know for sure, because, you know.
Sure.
I remember, I recall we approved one across the street, but it might not be of the same units. I can't remember.
Yeah, we had this building before. It was not too long ago.
Yes, this, this exact location was for a grower.
Right.
A few years ago, but that fell through, and we are.
When I drove up there yesterday, I said, "Ah, I've been here before."
So, again, it's.
And I walked around the building.
Déjà vu, slightly different location.
And I wanted to see if anything had changed on the building and the lettering. I'm like, yeah, so that was a grower, okay.
Correct, that was a grower.
That came to the end and then didn't go through?
I heard there was just not enough cash flow. It was not, it was not able to continue. We're independent, unrelated, but.
Yeah, okay.
We were hoping it worked for one person. Let's try.
Yeah, so I didn't hope the growers next door, you were delivering, and.
No, no, no.
Okay. Caleb, anything you want to go forward?
Yeah, I, I think, I think what Lucia suggests is, is paramount, because, I mean, if, if you are within some of those, like, you know, radius, within a school, or, you know, you pretty much can, you know, can use the space. And so, I, I feel like that's a due diligence, like, requirement for, for the board as well. So, yeah, I wouldn't be ready to approve if, if we're lacking that document.
Sure.
But in terms of other, other issues, I know staff have some issues, but I mean, in general, I think, given it's delivered for purposes, it's going to make it a lot different than, say, a retail sales location that we, the board have dealt with before. I'm generally in agreement with you about, like, you know, parking and, like, traffic that wouldn't be a concern to me. And so, just, so I think, aside what's commented, I might address one or two, and then other members can do it. In terms of, like, the, any open package or not, like, you know, I know, your policy mentioned a little bit about waste, and I suppose if you don't open, then there won't be any waste. And so, a question about, would that be any situation where the content will come out of those packages, in any case, like, maybe in disposal, et cetera?
So, what actually happens, my client or the employees would reject an open or damaged package upon delivery, so the delivery truck would take it back out with them. So, it would be.
Oh, I see.
Product comes in, oh, this product is not up to standard. It's open, it's bent, it's, or the container's bent, whatever. Goes back out on the same truck. And this metric seed-to-sale tracking, everything has to be accounted for. You can't, you can't just magically have numbers change, so everything is highly regulated and tracked.
So, it's not expected.
So, that's why there would be no, no waste, and obviously, no return policy with the customers.
I see. And so, it should be expected that there won't be any materials that are outside of the bag on, on this premise?
Correct. Not, not cannabis. It would be.
Yes.
Someone's lunch.
Yes, I understand.
Or just whatever office trash would be, yes.
Okay. So, I think that that addressed some of the staff comment. So, yeah, I, I think other than that, that radius map that is checking against, like, some of the restrictions on cannabis use, I, I don't have other big concerns, so I will leave that to other members to address other comments.
So, I'll go next. So, you indicated there'd be two drivers, so I know before, the Cannabis Control Commission was deciding whether they wanted two people in a car, or one person in a car. I knew that was some of the things that was in the media. So, what was the decision on that? Is it one person per car?
It's one person in the car. That person is going to have a body cam on them. That car also has a camera on them. It's, this is actually very high-tech and kind of interesting, but, no, it would be one person at a time, and the car actually would have a secure compartment for the cannabis product during delivery. So, no one would know.
I know, as you indicated, you know, the cars won't be marked, they won't have any signs, no move sign.
No.
Nothing indication what it is.
Very subtle, very discreet.
I know it was, you know, steal a pizza man, you know, like, unfortunately, guy leaves the car to deliver pizza, they come, they steal his pizza.
Correct, actually.
So, they won't be saying.
This would be quite a challenge to actually figure out.
So, you say your, your latest hours of business would be 9:00 PM at night?
Yes. Hours of operation would be nine to nine.
Okay. I know we approved the ordinance, well, it came before us, to allow the deliveries in the city, because I know a lot of other cities and towns are doing it. And some of the ideas is, maybe it's safer to have someone deliver to your house than someone go drive it, who may be already in pair. So, and the safety factor, you'd rather have it delivered than someone who might have used mail, want to drive into a site to buy some, if they can just sit home and pick it up.
Correct.
As a safety, as a safety feature, that was one of the considerations that was given for the ordinance to.
It's also a convenience for some people who need it for medicinal purposes. They may not actually be able to get out and drive themselves, so that's another, another factor that we'd be trying to benefit the community.
Or somebody who's, somebody who's disabled, or, because I imagine it would be, so like, people have the medical marijuana. You'd serve them as well as people who didn't have the medical card.
Yes.
It might be difficult for them to get.
And everything gets pre-ordered online, then IDs get checked, so if I made the order online, but a partner or a friend answered the door, they could not receive the product. So, it's a very, very secure system, very, the protocol is in place to keep this as streamlined and appropriate as possible.
And was it just recently that you got the okay from the fire department, I believe?
We have, the police department.
Police department, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think we got a letter on that.
Two days ago, approving our security plan, and they commented on our waste, our waste plan.
Yeah, so obviously, you have to comply with anything with the security plan by the police department. And the applicant also submitted the waste disposal, recycle implant to Lowell Police. They both have been reviewed and don't see any concerns. Okay. What was my other question? So, I know you said you have three and four employees, you have the four parking spaces, so the drivers, will they park their car inside at night when they're done, or they just park outside?
I'm, I'm going to reach out to my client on that one. I.
I'm not too concerned about that. The answer disagrees, because I know you have the parking anyways.
I was going to be like, I don't believe they're staying overnight, but this is.
Okay. Yeah, I know you said, you say you have three to four employees, so you have four parking, and they left two, or do they take those cars home at night, they leave them there at night, or?
One vehicle will be parked inside.
Just state your name, for the record. Thank you.
My name's Leonard Antoine.
Okay, thank you, sir.
One vehicle will be parked inside the bay.
Okay.
And one will be outside.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much. Bill, the only questions I have. Mr. Bichette, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, not really. I just, I, I, I'm satisfied in the sense that the, we received a memo from the Lowell Police Department, saying that they reviewed the security plan, because the security plan outlines handling of cash, but then in your presentation, in the narrative, said it was going to be a non-cash transaction. So, I'm assuming somebody's going to order online, pay in advance?
Correct.
Right, so.
It's debit card only.
So, I'm assuming this was more of a boilerplate security plan?
Yes, it, it has additional.
Yeah, yeah, no, then you kind of drop things in there to custom to this. Okay. And again, there are provisions if there was cash transactions.
So, the security plan was actually what was approved by the CCC when we were considering that Salem location.
Sure.
When the Salem preliminary permit was issued, it's essentially the same security plan. So, that's why, it's already been supported by CCC, and we are hoping that you would find it adequate.
Right, right. No, I guess it was just because it went into detail on handling cash.
Sure.
And you made a point to say it's not going to be a cash business, but if there was cash, there would be steps in place.
That would be, exactly.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And you, you may have, and this is, I know it's not, you're not manufacturing the product, you're not growing the product. I, I'm thinking the, the possibility of having the emissions of any odor is little to none, but is, is, that's been a concern of, of ours. It's, I mean, unfortunately, you can go out to other areas of the city where we've approved grow houses, and, and the odor is not great, and it, and it meets the standards, unfortunately.
So, in this case, everything's already prepackaged into a container. Then that container is within a vault. Then that vault is within the unit.
Yeah.
So, for that odor to reach outside, it would, it's, you're going through multiple, multiple layers before anything would reach outside.
The only time that's going to smell is when the end user gets it, I suspect, at this point.
That, that would be a yes. That's correct.
All right, okay. Yeah, we are, and, well, to the point of Lucia on, on, and that is a stipulation of Yeah, we are, and, well, to the point of Lucia on, and that is a stipulation of the, of the application, and it doesn't say May, it says the applicant shall submit a contact map, so...
Sure, my apologies.
To my colleagues, that, yeah, that would be necessary. And even though we may have approved it for use in the past, you know, we don't know if daycares have popped up or anything like that within the thousand feet radius, so. So clearly we'd be looking for that to make a final decision. And I think that is really, oh, Mr. Chairman, the, the material was very comprehensive, and like I say, I got the sense a lot of it was, was boilerplate, meeting the requirements of, of the industry, so, thank you.
Jerry, I've...
Go ahead, Caleb.
I've, I know there's almost no chances of odor, but I'm just wondering whether, I mean, the applicant will be open to, we'll put a condition on the odor, and just in case, that if there are any odor, then we'll have to revisit the issues and might require some odor mitigation plan.
I would agree.
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of like, not going to be, you know, applicable in most cases, but will you be open to such a condition?
Sure, of course, we can always...
Yeah, I mean, appreciate it, because, I mean, there are residents in the temple next door, so, I mean, we don't, we just want to be respectful of the neighbors.
Of course.
And what happened is, there was one that was approved before Ozoni came to effect, and then they came in because they needed an amendment, and myself and Mr. Bichette pulled up in the parking lot, and before we rolled our windows down, I'll take a smell like someone was burning one in the backseat. I'm like, really? Like, I can help you? I'm like, yeah, with the odor, what are you talking about? So ever since then, we've sort of been a little more compliant with the neighbors' requests, you know, and...
If there's odor, we will mitigate it.
Yeah, okay, so that's why we kind of been looking, looking at that plan, just if there is one, then, you know, try to put it in perspective and say how we can mitigate that. Mr. Sattner, any questions?
Well, I, I'm in the front line of smellings daily. So, my, my question to you is that, do you have security? Are they armed, or are they, they're not armed?
I'm going to turn it back over to, to my client, Leonard Antoine, but I believe there's no, no one is armed, but...
They're not allowed, is that how it is?
No, sir, it's illegal. It's not allowed to have firearms.
Is that through the Conservation Commission? I mean, marijuana?
Yeah, the CCC will not allow you to have...
Yeah, I mean, through the Cannabis Control Commission?
Correct.
That's one, right?
No firearms.
But then this still has to be approved by them anyways, right?
Correct.
Correct. They do a final, the chief of police will have to do a final walkthrough prior to a final licensing, and the CCC also comes and do a final inspection to make sure that all the camera systems are in compliance, as well with the vehicles. We also have a GPS system in the vehicle, where we track the vehicle throughout the whole delivery.
So you'd be tracking where everybody go, nice.
Correct, we can track where everybody goes through the whole time with, with our lease system, it's a POS system as well. So they're the ones that provide a way to make the payments online, or if the person can't make the payment online, we just have a debit card reader at the door, and we also have to check their license as well, with a license reader, to make sure that it's in compliance, and also if the person has a body cam.
So you know their delivery schedule ahead of time before they leave?
Correct, scheduled ahead of time.
And then you can track where they are?
Correct, and we also have a subscription service for anybody that's elderly that needs CBDs and anything of that for pain, so we can deliver it to them. Some people that can't leave the house, or we can set them up with an automatic subscription, so automatically know every week or every two weeks, we automatically deliver it to them. So, we have something really, good system in place.
Thank you.
Oh, just one more question. So is there a limit amount of each prescription?
Uh, yeah, it can't go over, CCC regulations, can't go over an ounce.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
And it's also limited to one delivery per person per day? So it's one ounce per delivery per day?
Yep. So I guess the question is, we will need the plan to make sure that doesn't fall in the school zone and the chaplain section there. How long will it take you to get that?
A day or two, probably.
All right, so what I've been looking at here is what our planning board schedule is. I believe our next meet is October, our next meeting is October 6th.
Okay.
How does that look, Pete, if we add this on?
We can make that work.
Yeah, this one, I think we're just looking at this matter, so, yeah, if you could have it by the 6th, and then obviously give it to staff, then they can make any comments on it or whatever. So if that's acceptable, I'll make a motion that we continue this matter till October 6th, so hopefully you can get that plan to us, and hopefully we can finalize the decision at the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time, Chairman, members of the board, appreciate it, and have a good night.
Second, yeah. Okay, so, the motion is to continue the matter till October 6th, do we have a second?
I second that.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, anybody objecting, here are none, so that motion carries until October 6th. Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a pre-op hearing for Rivers Edge. Residents First Development Corporation has filed for a pre-application hearing with the planning board regarding an amendment to their special permit and subdivision approval for the Rivers Edge development. At that time, the applicant was approved for 181 units. The applicant is now seeking eventual approval to create an additional six units for a total of 187 units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. With us tonight, we have Brian Malisi, Brian is the engineer for the project from Haley Wood. We have Dennis Conners, the project manager for Residents First, and I believe with us virtually is Diane Silva. Diane is the longtime volunteer president and treasurer of Residents First. Residents First was established well over 30 years ago in order to create affordable housing opportunities within the city. One of the primary projects that Residents First has been involved in is the reinvention of the Julian Stale Project off of Gorham Street, which is now known as Rivers Edge. So that project currently consists of 155 dwelling units. Before getting to the point where we were ready to march down the road to the final phase here, we needed to overcome a couple of obstacles. One, we needed to have the city rezone the remaining 12 and a half acres of this site to, to the traditional two-family zoning district. This board was part of that process, that happened this past spring. The other thing that we needed done was the, we needed the legislation amended in order to allow for up to 187 dwelling units. That was just signed into law this past July 3rd. So now that those two matters are done, we're, we're marching forward with this final phase. The goal of the final phase is to construct 16 condex-style buildings consisting of 32 dwelling units. The, these units will be sold to prospective buyers with income levels of 70% to 100% of the average median income. In order to complete the final phase, we'll be coming back before this board with a, with an application to amend the special permit that was issued pursuant to Section 8.2, the Planned Residential Development by law, and to amend the definitive subdivision plan that was, both were issued back in late of 2003 and very early 2004. Once the project is complete, again, we'll have, the, the complete subdivision will consist of 187 dwelling units at Rivers Edge. For purposes of discussion this evening, we've submitted a conceptual site plan, it was pretty far along in terms of engineering, but that site plan shows how the lots are laid out along the roadway, it has a zoning chart, the zoning chart shows that we are dimensionally compliant with regard to the dimensional requirements of 5.1. It also shows that we are compliant with regard to 6.1, we are providing off-street parking, two off-street parking spaces for each dwelling unit. The, the site plan also has an open space zoning chart, I'm sorry, an open space chart. That open space chart shows that we are still, we continue to be compliant with the minimum of 25% open space relative to the PRD bylaw. We have also provided the board with, with prototypical plans, the floor plans, the, sorry, the floor plans and the elevations of the building that we intend to build. So again, it's a duplex-type building. Each unit will have three bedrooms, one and a half baths, and about 1,300 square feet of living space. And again, each unit will also have a driveway that will be tandem parking for two off-street, for parking for two off-street spots. In addition to coming back before this board, we also need to present before the Conservation Commission due to the proximity of the site to the Concord River. So we'll be dealing with this application and the Conservation Commission concurrently, we'll do, do that at the same time. We're in receipt of the staff comments that were issued relative to tonight's hearing. Those comments are just essentially factual layout, what we're, what we are intending to do. Comment number five suggests that we may need dimensional relief for driveways, we do not believe that we will, and, and Brian will go over the site plan with the board in a few minutes, so we can demonstrate that. Comment number seven indicates that the intent here is to create condominium units and, and sell those units. So the, that is exactly our intent, we are creating 32 condominium units that will be sold to owner occupants. So by contrast, the, the first phase of this project constructed several duplexes, those duplexes were more typical of a two-family, where there's an owner, and the owner occupies one side and rents out the other side. So these units will all be, 32 units owner occupied. The engineer, engineering department has some, you know, had some comments that Brian will be able to address. The fire department was requesting a sweat path analysis, we will, we will provide that with our final application. We have no concerns about the fire department apparatus maneuvering through and around the site, it won't be a problem. So I guess at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Brian, Brian will go through the site plan with the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Malisi, I'm an engineer with Haley Wood &amp; Incorporated. And if it's okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to come forward with, I put up a couple of boards just to kind of point out a few things.
Absolutely.
So this first board is just a blow-up from the Lowell GIS system. It shows the, the Rivers Edge project. Initially, their egress came off of Gorham Street, and this location here with Rivers Edge, and it includes Eklund Drive, McGuigan Court, Chippewa Street, Seneca Street, Nelson Street, and 80 Way. The project that we're going to be putting back in front of you is this area outlined in orange. It was really just to complete the 80 Way loop and the, the building lots that are contained within that. I did want to point out that this red shaded area was part of the original plan but was removed around 2013-ish, and is now is one of the open space parcels, but I just wanted to point that out as well. This is a very bland-looking plan, but it was, it was meant to represent the fact that all the 16 lots that are going to house the new 32 units all meet dimensional requirements in both area and frontage. I should point out, and I'll point out, probably point out a couple of times, that the layout to 80 Way remains unchanged. So the layout of the roadway is not being touched whatsoever. The pavement edge, the right-of-way itself, does not change. We will provide the, the fire department with their sweat path plan, but we're pretty confident that they can make their loop around. These houses in white are the existing houses in close proximity to where we're going to Again, this is just a crullied colored picture of, of the layout of the, of the project. Again, the great area is the pavement of the roadway, which remains unchanged. You'll see that each unit has a, has a driveway that can park two cars adjacent to it. During, during my process, during the engineering, I think we've met with staff at least on two occasions, and maybe three occasions. The PRD regulations say that a parking spot has to be eight and a half feet wide. I should back up and say that my first go-around had a lot of the parking right in front of the units, and staff didn't like that. They had said, you put these beautiful buildings up, and then you put cars in front of it, nobody can see it. And then when I did drive around the neighborhood a couple more times, most of the duplexes do have driveways to the side of the structure. So the parking spot has to be eight and a half feet wide, I took those driveways and I made them eight and a half feet wide, we went and met with staff, and I was told, and I was pointed to a spot in the regulations, that a curb cut can only be 15 feet wide in this zone. Since I have two curb cuts at eight and a half feet wide, I was in violation of that. And what I will do, is one of the comments from staff, we will provide a detail that kind of outlines that on the plan, but what we do have now is, is a seven and a half foot curb cut for each one of the driveways, once we get in beyond the, it opens up to the eight and a half feet wide to comply with the parking. Parking has to be, or the driveways have to be a minimum of three feet from the property line, they have to be a minimum of three feet from, from the structure. And again, we'll put a whole bunch more dimensions on these plans, but I can tell you now that we do meet those requirements here. Because the roadway itself doesn't change, sewer doesn't really change, obviously the, the services to the buildings will change, but we'll, we'll show that on subsequent plans. The water service does not change, we'll have a looped water system that comes around, again, services to each one of the buildings. The biggest change to the utilities is going to be the stormwater management. You probably remember, maybe you don't remember, but the original plan for the Loop of 80 Way had an open detention basin in the middle behind the units. And what we're going to propose to do is to put a subsurface system in, probably very similar to what this board is used to seeing, storm tech units or concrete units in which we will, we will match the, the volume in the, in the rates in and out according to what was proposed before, as well as any increase in impervious area that we provide on the project. It outlets in the same, in the same manner, it outlets towards the east, towards the, towards the river. We did, not that it's, I won't say not as a concern, not a purview of this board, but we did have the wetlands redliniated, so we have a current wetland delineation out there that's how we can provide correct buffer zones when we do get in front of the Conservation Just because I've been in front of this board a couple of times, we will have a landscape plan, I just wanted to point out some street trees that are going to be going on the project, right, you beat me over, had enough times, maybe we'll learn, but we will have a, a landscape plan with some street trees, both on the perimeters, inside and outside perimeter of the project. And I know it was brief, but that's, in a nutshell, I'll be right over there to answer any questions.
So that's a summary of where we're headed with this proposal, with the final phase at the Rivers Edge. We still have a couple of obstacles we need to overcome, we need, we need to have the development agreement amended, that needs to be approved by the Board of Commissioners of the Lowell Housing Authority, and by the City Council, and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. We also need to get our, our funds through a grant, which we, both of those matters are well underway, confident we're going to get there, and we, we expect to, to be able to break ground in the spring of 2026. So that's all we have, Mr. Chairman, we would love to get whatever feedback the board might have, so that when we come in with our final application, we're, you know, it's a buttoned-up application, we're good to, to move forward. Thank you.
You're welcome. So I know when I read the thing, it indicated that it's a pre-application hearing, so basically, for those who may be wondering, so we don't make a decision on this tonight, this is just to come in for informational purposes, we render no decision either for or against. It's not really considered a public hearing, but I always allow people to speak, and I think it's beneficial to the applicant as well. So if there is anybody here this evening who'd like to speak in regard to this matter, either way, yes, could you come to the microphone, just state your name and address, please?
Yes. Hi, Donna Bonds, 50 Saratoga Street. My husband and I, we own a lot down in this area that they're speaking of, and we have for the last 24 years. So we've been waiting a very long time for this project to come, to come about. So we have not been, until recently, we had attended a city council meeting, because my husband will go online and check with the planning board, like, he'll see what you guys are doing, to see if any topics are coming up about this property. Because when, we haven't been kept informed from Residents First about everything. There has been changes to... Residents First about everything. There has been changes to, you know, what can be built down there. A lot of different changes have happened over the years. So all we're asking, my husband and I are asking, he couldn't be here tonight because of work reasons, but is to be kept up to date, to be invited to meetings like this. And John, thank you very much. He did reach out to my husband, because I'm not sure he was aware that all these years, we've been kept in the dark about a lot. And I know there's been a lot of problems and issues with the property and whatever, the funding they need and all that. But at the same time, my husband and I have been waiting a very long time to do this. So we just ask that we be on a mailing list, an invite list from the planning board, and John is, like I said, he will reach out to us as well, representing Residents First, just so my husband and I can be invited to all these meetings and discussions about what's going to go on, especially now that hopefully things will start happening in the spring. And we want to know where we're going to fit in with all this. I'm sure we're going to have to speak to Residents First, because we do own a lot down there in this property that they're speaking of. So I just want to make the planning board aware of that.
Yeah. You want to be sponsored? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, sure, absolutely. Go right ahead. Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
So, I guess some clarification. So is that lot not part of any of the agreement? That's a private ownership lot?
Correct. That's not part of what we are proposing, not within our proposal.
What is involved in any of the zoning changes, or any part of it?
It was involved in the zoning change, because it's part of that, you know, 12 and a half acres.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
And just for clarification, you know, there was no intent by Residents First to not communicate, just there hasn't been a lot going on. There's been a lot of red tape that we've had to deal with, but once we started marching forward, you know, we tried to keep the Barnes involved, and we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, because it sounds like you have a lot of things coming forward besides just us, and between the council and several other things, yeah.
Well, the first we heard from Residents First was earlier this year at that city council meeting. That was the first time in many, 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 many years. And I'm not blaming John or anything on that, but there were zoning changes that we weren't informed about. Then they got switched back, which we were happy about. So there have been a lot of no communication, but I'm hoping that'll change now, that when we're forward. And when we sold Residents First our, it was approximately three-acre lot, we got money for the portion, and also agreement to get a build-able duplex lot. Okay? So meaning, you know, services and everything on the street were going to be there for us, and we, of course, know we're going to have to tie into that when we build. But that was our agreement. It's all in writing, and we have a deed, and we pay taxes on that property that we can't even build on right now. But we're hoping to be more positive that going forward now that we'll be able to do something. And I appreciate John reaching out to us. Thank you.
Tony Gary, could you keep her in the link then?
Yeah, we will certainly keep Jerry and Donna in the know.
So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to any of the board members. Do they have any comments?
I just...
Kevin, you and I have been here the longest watching this project. And Mr. Connors, I can't forget.
Not only that, I was glad to hear you were getting some grant funds, because I was on the banking side that did the...
Way back.
Way back. So I, with Mr. Connors and, I don't know, 15 years, 16 years, that I served on that credit committee. So that was a long time. And if Diane's still on the phone, she's done more than her share on that. So a couple of questions. Well, for one thing is that, this is a pre-application hearing, so you're going to come to us for site plan approval, and that requires a note, you have to be given notice. The odd thing with zoning changes, it's all you have to do is post the public hearing. You don't have to send notice to a butters, technically. So that's, believe me, I know the frustration there, exactly.
They also have to put a sign up for the site plan, but you'll see, two weeks in advance. It's one of the things we...
They'll be kept informed.
Yeah. So you'll be seeing that sign going up somewhere.
But the butters around there will get certified mail as well. It has to happen.
Yeah. But if they go before the other, yeah.
The other hurdles that you have, or other things that you have, are separate from that, from your involvement here. Question on the trees, because I just remember there was still a question on the open space in that development, right, and how it's handled, and the maintenance on it, as far as whether there's a, you know, HOA fee. So there's three trees, and I'm looking at, you know, my site plan here indicates it looks like two would be on one lot, one's on the other. But then I'm looking at your lines over there, and they look like they're, it's on a separate lot. What's the, you see the three trees that, on the inside? Nope, further, well, those, but in effect, there too, yeah.
So, I apologize. I was going to, I should have mentioned something about the open space. So I'm holding here the last approval not required, or land plan that was registered at the Registry of Deeds, and it showed a table. We tried to put that table. This will be on subsequent plans as well. They had 11 parcels of open space. Each one of them has a certain area associated with it, and they came up with a total, and it is, they were at 32, and I wrote it down, and I can't find it, but they were at 32.9% where the requirement was 25. Because we are revising the property lines within the circle here, we take open space parcel number nine, and we revise it a little bit. We reduce it a little bit. It's not exact, but this is the easement that would be required for the new drainage system, and we create an open space parcel here, and there's still a little bit of an open space parcel here. And so what we do is, on our new proposal, we are at 31.9% rather than the 30.
Because the plan that we have, when I printed it online, doesn't have that. So that's what...
Okay.
Okay, so I just...
Oh, I apologize. We did add that. Maybe there was an older one, but we did have that open space parcel chart, just so you could follow it. This is what it was before. This is what we proposed to do.
Okay. Because I just went out on the city website and pulled this down, so I...
Do you have a zoning chart or open space chart?
This is what I pulled down, so...
If I may?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
We submitted a revised site plan.
Definitely, we definitely revised it.
Maybe I pulled the wrong one down, but that's why, okay, question on that one I'm looking at. So then, how is that being, so the other question is, is this, is each condex going to have their own condo bylaws, and are they going to collect like a fee just for those units? Or is this going to be viewed as a condo development, and there's going to be a fee, so that the open space is going to be maintained? How is the open space going to be maintained, I guess?
Good question. As far as the condexes are concerned, I'll answer that first. The, each duplex structure will be its own condominium trust, if you will. And they'll have common expenses in terms of insurance, you know, common structure replacement, roof siding, stuff of that nature. But really, it will just be insurance for the most part. You know, the utilities will be completely separate. The, you know, the yard space will be separate. They'll be responsible for their own yard area. In terms of the open space maintenance, you know, throughout the project, it's sort of being done presently, you know, on an as-needed basis. No, it's a little bit of a problem. We're working, trying to work through that issue, but we haven't solved that problem yet. There was not a homeowners association established with the first phase. Probably should have been. So we're trying to address that at the same time.
I was hoping with this, there was going to be a solution for that.
Well, we're certainly working on that.
Yeah, understood. Understood. How is, so how is it being maintained now? Is it the housing authority that goes in there?
Essentially.
On a...
Or somebody, a private contractor, paid, you know, hired by somebody, yeah.
And who hires them, I guess?
Oh, Residents First. They're working for Residents First.
They're working for Residents First, okay. Just trying to figure out how that's being done. Okay. I mean, I love the idea, the whole idea of having the open space, and there's some playgrounds in through there. It's just the idea was never really addressed. Didn't know if this was a separate phase, or how that was going to be handled. So, all right.
Yeah.
No, I love, this is better than, I think, what was being proposed prior. And now, what was brought to light with this lot, I think with that zoning change, was probably in direct conflict with the agreement that the Barnes had originally, it appears. So it looks like it's back to, back to the original condition, which I guess is a good thing. So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Caleb, any questions, comments?
It looks like a good design, good development, so, yeah, I feel positive. Well, shouldn't say much about that, but, yeah, it looked like a good plan. I think I asked about the road stops before. Now, I identified that now you're not going to the south side, and so there's that, to-be-developed-like road stop at, you know, on Nelson, at the end of Nelson Avenue. And I noticed there's one also on Seneca Street that ends on the multifamily. I don't know if that leads to a driveway. I forgot. But like, I don't know, just, it just usually bothers me when you have a complete neighborhood, then there's this kind of like end of a driveway. So I'm just wondering if like, you know, there could be any plan to maybe make them open spaces as well, or, I think it's on the bigger map, on the GIS map.
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's not pertaining to this part of the development, but as you can see on the Nelson Avenue, to the south end of it, between two houses, is a road stop. And you pass by it, and then you miss it, but it have like, got the barriers, got rails. I mean, it's not very aesthetics, and also it kind of give you an idea that this is still under development community. I know Seneca also have a stop, but I just don't know whether that opens into, on the east side of Seneca Street.
On the east side?
Yeah, right there, on the right-hand side of that.
Over here.
Yeah, that one, I forgot whether that is or not, but, you know, I wonder if those can be changed to open space. I mean, the CIO opportunity increased that a little bit more, but at the same time, I don't know if residents are using them for parking. So I know it's got tricky.
Can I look at it?
Say again?
Can I look at it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. I can look at my map, too. And I know the one on Nelson Ave is definitely there, because...
There's a part of it here that was going to go out here.
This is a privately-owned home. It was part of the original transfer.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Actually, we did a lot of renovations to keep him happy up on the...
Okay.
This parcel here crosses wetlands.
Yep.
Okay. That was part of the original development plan. During the whole course of this history of this development, that's been taken out of the plan because it's impossible cost-wise to develop that.
Okay.
So it's part of, it is part of the open space calculation.
Yeah, but I'm pointing at just right away, next to the private home.
This?
Yep. The north of the, yeah, that, basically that.
Looks like an horse-sized driveway when you go...
Yeah, it's like one of the...
Well, I mean, that's street-funded, but he uses the driveway, I imagine.
Okay.
We'll provide some photos when we go to file the full-blown site plan to show you those areas, and we will have a discussion.
Yeah, because, well, he might feel against not changing it, I understand, but I think...
It's a driveway for him, yeah.
But I just feel like, you know...
The parking is nice, yeah.
A road that leads nowhere, kind of an idea. So I don't know if there's, can be anything done, but it would be appreciated if there's any conversation about that. And I don't know if the Seneca Street is the same situation. I was just trying to look. Let's see. No, I think that one might go into the park. Let's see. The one, two.
I'll investigate that. I've been, we've been kind of focused right on here, but I will go up and investigate that, and be ready with some...
Yeah, same idea. Yeah, but I see, I understand the challenge. I mean, if there's a pavement, have a cootie sack, you know, people can have a basketball hoop, but I will, you know, I think an actual like, half-court might be like, even better than, you know, just there. But just my thought and comments. Thank you.
I definitely would, I know the butters over there, so I would just, if you're even thinking of doing anything, talk to them.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
And if they're happy, leave it alone.
Lucille, have any questions and comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sauer?
No.
Nope. Okay. Yeah, I'd like, I think it's, obviously come a long way, been here quite a few times, looking at this, so to bring it to final closure would, I think would be great for the neighborhood. So I'm in favor of the plan going forward. Obviously, we'll wait to see what the site plan has to say, and comments from the city staff. But conceptual, looks like a good addendum to the plan, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you. We appreciate your time and the input. We look forward to coming back for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a pre-application hearing for 236 Broadway Street. The applicant has submitted plans for 55-unit residential building at the above address. They have filed for a pre-application hearing with the planning board to receive feedback on their proposal before moving forward with the plan. Again, this is a pre-application matter, so we do not give any final determination this evening. Anybody here this evening in regards to Broadway Street? Peter, have you heard from anybody for continuance or nothing? No, for Broadway Street? No? Okay. So I know we put a couple, we have things on for the 3rd, and we put things on for the 20th this evening. So looking forward, what do we have? November 3rd would be the next date after that, after we just kind of filled up the last two meetings?
Do we know if they're still planning on coming for a pre-application, or just coming forward for the actual application?
They were sent the agenda for this board and the comments, and they didn't reply to theirs, so...
And they, but they requested a pre-application?
They did.
Oh, okay.
And what'd you say? You sent them a copy of the agenda today?
I sent them a copy of the agenda last week.
Last week, okay. So they know what's on, huh? Okay. So I guess we could continue it, and if they don't want to go forward, they could always request to be withdrawn, right? Now, by reading the comments, I know they have to go before the historic board as well. You wouldn't know if there's a date certain for that yet, would you?
I don't know.
I mean, that's something I know Mrs. Dole would have...
Yeah, I do know that Historic has...
Unless Lucille knows if they come before her.
I don't know yet.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know when we saw the comments from, that said they'd have to go before the historic board as well. Okay.
Yeah, I know the next historic board is also the night of the 20th. You guys will be running at the same time. It's my understanding the concerns by the historic administrator are pretty significant, so I'm not sure it will be on the agenda at that meeting.
Okay. So, hmm. So I was thinking, maybe, just as a suggestion, to continue it to November 3rd, and notify them that no one's here. The board put it over the next two meetings of hold. They want to go forward, fine. If not, tell them to submit a letter that they want to withdraw it. Okay. So what's, that's just a suggestion. What does the board think of that?
Sounds reasonable.
You think that's reasonable? You guys think it's reasonable? Okay. All right, then. This is my suggestion. I guess I'll make the motion then. I guess I make a motion that we continue the pre-application for 236 Broadway to November 3rd. The applicant was not present. The applicant wants to come in on that date, do the presentation, fine. If they're looking for continuance on that date, or withdrawal, they can notify staff ahead of time, and obviously, the board will take any requests under consideration. So I'll make a motion to continue to November 3rd.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Here and then, that motion carries. Next matter going along is the meeting schedule for 2026. is the meeting schedule for 2026. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? If not, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion's allowed. Do we have any comments, any further, I mean, comments from any board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, last night was the September meeting of Northern Mississauga Council of Governments, and just to let you know, once again, I think this is my 14th year, I was elected as the treasurer for the organization, and we also voted on the first phase and adopted the At Home in Greater Lowell Phase One report. That is going to be, it's a very comprehensive regional housing plan for the NEMCOG region. And there's still two additional phases remaining. The full document should be released at some point next year, but it's very, very comprehensive, and it's meant to really be a tool for the region to hopefully open up discussion on creating housing that is going to be palatable for all the communities, right? I mean, all the communities need to do more to create some housing, but we're all understanding it needs to be, you know, how can you, how can you increase housing and have it be fairly acceptable to the communities, right? So it's a challenge in the surrounding communities. Our neighbors aren't exactly doing, you know, open to a lot of housing that's needed right now, right, that middle, that middle housing. But it's a tool. I think it'll be great for discussion, for even within the city of Lowell, and there's various aspects of the plan that I think will be useful for every single community in the region. And so looking forward to the final adoption of it, but I look forward to seeing that. And then also, just to, the notice should be going out, but the annual NEMCOG meeting is going to be October 15th, and it's going to be at the Chelmsford Center of the Arts, which is the old town hall, and invitations will be going out. Usually, the land use boards get the invitation, we should pass that along, so looking forward to that. It should be a good event. There'll be remarks from State Representative Jim Osoro, and the keynote speaker will be addressed by the Executive Office of Housing. The keynote speaker will be the executive director of the Housing and Livable Communities Secretary, Ed Augustus, so that should be, that should be a very good meeting, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any further comments? Okay, speaking of how he said to have the annual meeting, Peter, we usually have our election of offices in our September meeting, so can we put that on agenda for next meeting? Okay. And just on, for the minutes for the Broadway, just put down the applicant wasn't present, and that's why we continued it, okay? Having said that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair vote yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion's allowed. We are adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone.